Good evening, it is, sitting here, double check. It is six thirty-four, this is Robert Stevenson, I apologize for the delay. We are going to open the South of Cowan Granville Regional School District School Committee meeting for December twenty-first. Can I get a motion to open the meeting? Alright, can I show hands to open the meeting? Let's see, it shows seven zero zero pass. Alright, can I get everybody to stand to do the pledge of allegiance? Hi, pledge of allegiance. Alright, we have, and everybody crack its, the minutes from our meeting on December seventh. Can I get a motion to entertain those minutes? Alright, any questions on the minutes from December seventh? Right, everybody was in the right spot, Amy number. Everybody that remote was remote. Can I get a short answer except the minutes from December seventh? Let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, warrants, we have warrants that have gone around, I think they're already all signed and back to Amy's. Superintendent Willard, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, we are at our first public comment section. Anyone wishing to have a public comment, please just raise your hand, we'll bring you up to the podium. We'll give you a three-minute timeframe in order to do that. It's not an opportunity to have any sort of interaction, but it's an opportunity for you as the public to deploy your opinion. Let us know about a subject that's concerning you, so. Absolutely, yeah, if you want to go up there, just state your name and where you live, and then the three minutes and the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm Jessica Maloney, I live in Southwick, I'm a graduate of Southwick High School. I currently have three children in the school district. Two of them are in ninth grade. And I came tonight because they are both in the ninth grade honors English class. And last week I came across some rather alarming and I think inappropriate assignments, as well as a quiz that was put out by Harvard University, it's an implicit bias quiz. And it came with a two-page disclaimer. And to me, having fourteen and fifteen-year-olds take a quiz with a two-page disclaimer was alarming. I did email Principal Trammell, as well as CC, the superintendent. We went back and forth, and I spoke with the principal today, who assured me that this quiz has been removed from the curriculum. But I guess my question is, how did it get in there in the first place? I was first told that everything has been approved by the district, and then kind of backtrack today saying, well, no, actually, you know, maybe this wasn't. That's, that's my, my major issue, there are also some other assignments. I think any assignment asking a minor what their sexual orientation is, is hands down inappropriate. That's my child's personal business, and when you're fourteen, that shouldn't be a question that any adult should be asking on any assignment given. So while I appreciate Joe saying that you guys were going to delve into this and look at the curriculum for this ninth grade honors class, you know, going forward, I just felt as a parent, my voice needed to be heard, because I think it's not just these two things, there are videos, it's, it's very, everything is biased, everything is social justice, and I understand we are living in pretty crazy times, but I think it's it's a lot being thrown at these kids every single assignment since November from now. This video is on being biased and how you should be thinking versus how you want to be thinking. So I just hope that that's something that's taken into very serious consideration. Because as a parent, it's disturbing to know that this is what my children are learning in my school district. So thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything for public comment this evening? Alright, thank you. Okay, so moving on. Marissa, you're up, you got anything good for us today? Awesome, Laura's yours.
Last Tuesday, the SRS chorus, seventh and eighth grade band and high school band had their first concert after seven hundred and thirty-three days. We're all very thrilled to be back in front of an audience. And I also have our spirit week, which have some, some of my favorite. So our first day was Monday. We had country versus country flow. So a lot of tennis skirts and cowboy hats. And then we had anything but a backpack and crazy socks. Personally, I brought a laundry basket for those.
It's a very good idea.
And then we had seventies versus seventy. And then we had Blizzard versus.
Very good.
And then Friday was class colors.
And I heard some people did Blizzard and beach at the same time.
Yeah, ski goggles and Hawaiian, yeah. To continue, these past two days, AP students have been taking kid terms, and overall, everyone's been getting ready for break. And in regards to the events of the fact these last week that resulted in a shelter in place, in short, the announcement, Miss Mr. Trammell went over the announcements on Thursday and addressed the last few days. He explained the purpose of the shelter in place, and that is to keep students and staff in their locations to, in this case, conduct investigations, and that a shelter in place is not an indication of danger. And thankfully, both days, the investigations proved that SRS was not at risk, and this was due to a trend online that was to disrupt the school day on December seventeenth. And urged students to make smart choices regarding personal connections and social media posts, and closed it by asking students to report any behavior, comments, or quotes that are concerning, and that we all need to work together to ensure everyone sees this. And the rest of the week. And coming in this week, we had ugly sweater day and pajama day today, and it was a good way to close out the week. And today, there was a student athlete leadership meeting ran by Mr. Trammell and Ms. Shorter at SRS. Captains and leaders of all winter athletics teams gathered to discuss how to create a positive environment during the season. They brainstormed ideas, how to be proactive role models, both on and off the ice court, mat, track, and slopes, and students will meet again next one.
How long did it take you to practice that? Thank you so much, Marissa. Alright, educational presentation. It's Mr. Putnam here. Oh, sorry, I understand you wanted to address the committee.
I do, and I didn't know, didn't, wasn't planning on it being particularly educational, though.
The non-educational presentation, then I'll, I'll put a new tag on that for you.
I, I'm, I'll try to stay within my three minutes.
No, that's, that's.
I know, but, but you got an agenda. But just off the record, or you know, off the cuff here, thanks for what you do, it's so important to the community. And it's hard work, and it's been especially hard the last two years. I know a little bit about it, I spent three years on the regional school committee a long, long time ago. We won't even talk about dates, but Marissa was just a, a dream of her parents. And my dad was, before there was a region, was on the school committee for about twenty years. So I know a little bit about what you do, but thank you so much for what you do. But that's not why I'm here tonight, here on behalf of Southwick two fifty. They call out to the field hockey team who helped us out on the sixteenth, very, very impressive. So we want to leave some things for the schools. And, and I'm gonna treat you as the representative of the school.
And the chair as well.
This is what you warned me about, okay? So what do we got?
So the first thing we have decals, Southwick two fifty decals, I'm hoping, I think they'll take you up to at least the sixth grade. One, one per student who wants them, I understand the kids from Granville and Talley may not particularly identify with them. But we'd like to hand those out, so. And I'm gonna pick on Steve, I want you to count those very carefully. I think your superintendent might be purloining one. Probably more significantly, we produced a, a book along the way, so it's kind of, it's actually, I don't know if it's a sequel or the other one's the prequel, I don't ever quite understand that. But it is a sequel, it's called Southwick Revisited, and it's about a hundred and twenty pages of historical photographs of our community, everything about it, and actually, there was one about twenty years ago called Around Southwick, so a complete set of three for each of the school libraries, and, and we hope that the, the students will use them to, you know, find out about what's special about Southwick and our little beautiful spot in, in the world. So you ready to take pictures?
Yeah.
So you hold the books and. Oh, we got a good photographer here, yeah.
No, what the last one's different.
The first two are Southwick Revisited, because, and then this one is the twenty-year-ago prequel.
We do this, you hold on.
Gonna make an old man look good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam.
You're very welcome. Yeah, he'll take one of those.
We don't want to miss out the if you don't want powder mill yelling at it.
Well, I was kidding her whether she has library trouble or if it's not.
But anyway, thanks.
Thank you so much, nice seeing you again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Putnam, having a nice holiday.
Merry Christmas.
Alright. Straight, waiting to go on his winter trip, Mr. Trammell's here to tell us what's handle changes. I just asked, I thought I'd be on his vacation now.
Don't they have professional?
Yeah, oh, I didn't.
That's why we have a long vacation.
So I believe you have in front of you a request to postpone finals through two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. It is the policy, which is why I'm making this request. Finals traditionally have been administered as a, as a semester-long cumulative exam. They've counted for twenty percent of the final grade for the students. Finals have been conducted over about a three-day period of testing, a one-day review. Sometimes it falls during Martin Luther King Day weekend or week, so it takes up an entire week of, of testing. And in the past, students have had the privilege of opting out of some exams, given the Renaissance program that we've had in place in the past. The reason I'm requesting, or what I'm requesting now is to to postpone how final exams are currently written for this year, and allow the teachers to give a, a unit cumulative exam instead of a semester-long, a unit one to, to close out the semester, not have it count for twenty percent of, of the student's grade. And the reasons why I outlined there for you, what, what we've noticed is the last year and a half with the pandemic and, and the impact that, that this has had on students' learning has put a lot of stress on the teachers and the students coming back in. Teachers and students are working extremely hard to make sure that all standards are, are being met, and that we're closing gaps each and every day. This is going to be a, an ongoing process that, that education is going to have to deal with, and, and we don't feel like we've made this up in ninety days of school, and giving finals in the way that it's been done really assesses students in, in the best way. A goal of Superintendent Willards from, from day one to school year has been data collection and implementing benchmarks. This is something that, a plan that we have put in place in, at, at Southwood Regional School in grade seven through twelve, where we have put in benchmark testing in English and math, and so we feel we are getting some data on our students' progress throughout the school year through this initiative. As I highlighted, the tradition, finals in the past traditionally have been about a week long. We feel that giving up a week at this time of, of time on learning is, is more detrimental than having three half-days and a review day. That having that time back for the teachers and the students to focus on the standards and to give an assessment at the end, that's not in a full eighty-four minutes, would again be more beneficial. The considerations of the great on waiting, I mean, I think this has been a discussion for our teachers as well, in the, in, in a shift in education as well, is having one, one assessment at the end of a semester that counts for a fifty-year grade, is, is this the best the best process that we have in, in place for our students? Also, our students haven't taken exams in three years, or three semesters, not three years, three semesters at this point in time. The last time they took it was two years ago in January, so the spring of nineteen and twenty, and then all of last year of twenty twenty-one, we, we did not have exams, so. Again, that was a shift that's been a discussion that we've had internally at the school for a number of years. Colleges are getting away from, from this one-time end of the semester exam as well. And so our students currently that are, that are in high school, really haven't had the experience of taking exams in, in the way that it's outlined in, in the policy. And our Renaissance program has not been in place for, for two years. It's, it's currently under review, Mrs. Najala, our geometry teacher at, at the regional school, has graciously taken the reins to get this program back started, but we decided, instead of implementing it this year, not knowing what's the landscape of COVID was going to bring us, and the landscape of, of where we were going to be with our classes and our tests. She's reviewing different policies that schools have throughout the area of incentivizing and motivating students, and the option of not taking exams as, as a reward. So we hope to have a new and improved Renaissance program, and I think was in place for close to twenty-five years prior to, to the pandemic, and so it probably was in time and due for, for a fresh set of eyes on it, and so I'm grateful for Miss Najala to, that, that she's taken on this task. Those are really, those, those are a number of reasons that, that I'm citing as, as advocating for why I would like to postpone finals for this year. I'm not suggesting making a, a, a change to the handbook quite yet, I think if this is, if this is granted, then the staff at the department heads who and myself have had discussions around this, will take the spring semester to discuss finals more in depth, and do some more research on what other schools are doing, what we want to do as our own school and district, and then propose a change to the policy language for the end of the school year for next year's handbook.
Perfect, so how, you said the unit test replaced the final.
It would be, could be a unit test, yeah, I mean, instead of.
So you'd be multiple unit tests that add up to being what the final.
Yeah, so kids all, all semester long are taking unit tests or doing assessments every three to four weeks, and so instead of doing one test in, at the end of January that, that assessed all units, it would be on just that one unit that they're finishing up at this time.
Go ahead. So is there, is there talk about changing the waitings of, because right now, I know a lot of the classes, or at least the ones that I know my kids have been in, you got homework counts for twenty-five percent, and you got quizzes down for twenty-five percent, projects, and then tests. If you're gonna eliminate the finals, are you, are they looking at reweighting those so that you don't have them all equal, or is it?
No, I, how teachers would grade for the, the semester, semester quarter would be the same. It, quarter one would be twenty, would be fifty percent, quarter two.
No, no, but inside of that, like, like if you've got, because what you're doing, if you get rid of the final. You've got eighty, right now, you've got eighty percent of that grade that pretty much broken up evenly between quizzes, homework, tests, and, and projects.
No, it would be a hundred percent of the quarter grades.
Great, but inside of that, like they have quizzes and homework, you gotta still count for something.
Yeah, so, so I, I, so most, how they would set it up with, I think what inside you're saying is that, let's say homework is twenty-five percent, projects are twenty-five percent, quizzes are twenty-five percent, tests are twenty-five percent. That stays the same. Because that's your quarter grade.
There are other tests that.
No, no, absolutely. But, but before. Okay, that twenty-five, the way that was broken up only, only counted for eighty percent of the overall grade, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that by changing this, you are now diluting the amount that the tests are worth, and you're increasing the, the quizzes and homework counts for in their final overall grade. Because you're taking, you're, you're taking that twenty percent that you were giving to the final.
But it's still a percentage of what they actually did, and if they're not doing, then it's still a fair representation of their percentage.
So how, 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 how in the past, your final grade was assessed, is that, that, that quarter one was forty percent, quarter two is forty percent, and your final was twenty percent. And now quarter, quarter one is fifty percent, and quarter two is fifty percent.
That's a more significant change than what you're saying.
But we also had kids who had the Renaissance card who were, didn't have to take a final, so they would already have been fifty percent, fifty percent.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah, it's just everybody goes to that. These first tests would have been end of January, is that right?
Yes.
And so what, like, was it basically seeing how everything went in the fall that led to this point of wanting to do this?
Some of it was, yeah, yeah, I mean, some of it's, it's kind of the reentry back into school and seeing where we're at, and where students are, and, and the, and the learning gaps that we need to, to fill, meet their needs, the amount of time I'm learning that we've lost, and it's, and.
But I think, I, I think that the issue of finals and how finals are weighted, and how finals have been conducted, has been an issue for a while, and that the disruption that the educational world has experienced has just kind of accelerated the, the bringing this to the forefront, am I right on that?
Absolutely, I, I, I think, I think finals in general have, have evolved over the last few years from a fifty to a hundred question exam, and, and so the bubble to, to essays, to short answer questions, to projects, to performance-based projects. So, so finals have evolved over the last few years to begin with.
And so Joe, you know, when you, when, you know, your team is revising this and coming to us in May with the, you know, kind of revised view of what finals may look like in the future, or assessments in general in the future. So, you know, I'm hearing people say that, you know, finals at the, the college level are, you know, changing, or, or my only concern was that, you know, what, what works for a ninth grader is, is not what necessarily is best for a twelfth grader, and that we do still need to be preparing our twelfth graders to, to take cumulative exams and to study for cumulative exams. So my hope is just that, you know, when, you know, when you guys are meeting to reevaluate, you know, you're considering the, the college preparatory requirements of, say, a twelfth grader versus a ninth grader.
Sure, I mean, AP exams are still in place as well, so we have close to almost twelve AP courses that we have offered, so those will still be in place in May. And test testing is, is still in place as well from April through June for the students.
Right, kids just don't have.
There's nothing quite like that, like, three hours, four hours, and I, well, those huge tests, I can't remember. Alright, perfect. Any other, anything else?
No, that'd be great, I mean, I think.
Please change it.
Yeah, I mean, this, this would be extremely helpful, this has been, I can't have said perfectly, this has been a discussion that, that teachers in each department have had around the effectiveness and the impact, and, and the overall feedback that we get from finals, and, and COVID over the last year and a half, and the destruction that it's given us, has accelerated our conversations to what we are now, and we want, we want to use our time on learning wisely, we want to make sure what students do is, is effective and impactful.
I, I totally agree with Pan, whatever we're doing, however aligned to give them the most amount of success and potential for success at the next level prepares them for that, then.
Yeah, I mean, colleges have, have, I, I mean, high schools really feed off of what colleges do. And so higher ed, I'm sure, have changed their practices as well in the last two years, and so that'll be an area that we'll look at as well, is what colleges are doing for, for final assessments, and and bridging out from ninth to twelfth grade to, to postgraduate experiences.
Marissa, being the old student here, I don't want to push on this, but what are your thoughts on this? Do you think it's a good idea, I'm assuming if we took a poll of the, of the, of the students, I'm sure they'd be all for no finals.
Yeah, because it's just so hard to, at the end of the year, just try and re-remember everything that you learned throughout the year, like, I'd rather take unit tests and stuff like that to kind of simplify what I'm learning then, than just try to remember it all for this big test at the end of the year. So there's just, there's just no way.
We all had to do that, we all had to do that. Yeah, we're all chills. Now, that works out great, as long as the colleges switch it, but I mean, the challenge is, when you get to, when you get to university, and you get to the end of that first semester, and you've got to take finals, and you've never tried this before, that could be devastating. Especially, it, it's not, it's not fifty bucks, you know, to go to college, we want to make sure that when you get there, that you're prepared to be able to perform adequately, but yeah, I think in the situation, I think it's certainly a reasonable request right now.
And we'll take that feedback from school committee back to our discussions as the department head leaders, and make sure that we have it planned in place in May, June, for the handbook revisions, that, that keeps this feedback in mind.
Yeah, it'd be interesting when they do that, if we get, if you guys get some info, like, what are they doing at college, what are they doing at the other districts, is everybody, I mean, I'm sure all of us that had to do these finals would show love to choose.
I have an ulcer.
But I'm gonna tell you, at the masters level, we didn't take finals.
No, it's all like.
No, no.
For those of us that didn't do the masters level, didn't get that.
All of these are finals.
Paper, yeah, apply what you've learned in a final.
Alright, Mr. Charles, thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate it.
We will have an answer, if you want to stick around, we'll have an answer for you here real soon.
Okay, great.
Alright, Mr. Presnell, you have a job description you want to speak to us about.
I can. So, as you may have heard, our director of technology, Mr. Vermolvi, left the district at the end of November to take another position elsewhere, basically retiring from us to work elsewhere. Though, in preparing for posting that position, looked at the job description, felt it was necessary to make some, some pretty significant changes to what had existed, which was it went back many years, so with the pace of change to technology and what we're doing with technology in the district, it was necessary to update the, the documents. Mr. Tagliari, the, the interim director, myself, Mrs. Sullivan, with the help of our HR specialist, Mrs. Larkham, got our hands on some copies of other technology director job descriptions from other regional school districts. The importance there being a regional district is kind of on our own, we don't have folks at the town level or city level to rely upon, so some of our jobs are, they're different in a regional district than what you would find in a municipal district because of the the assistance or involvement of town personnel, so working with those regional school district job descriptions, we're able to extract the things we liked out of each of them, keep the things that we had that still made sense, and introduce some other things and kind of update. We also consulted with our IT consultant, we rely on for larger-scale projects and more complex networking issues. And this is what we came up with. We, we would like to get this approved, and get it posted as soon as possible, so we can begin the process of searching for a, a new director, which we know we will need going forward. The committee has any questions?
Anybody have any questions on the job description?
I will say that we we have a a very, um. Although the technologies subcommittee hasn't been active, we do have. Very involved, um. Members in a, uh. Yeah, bi-weekly group, working group, uh, which is curriculum instruction, Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Tagliari, instructional technology specialist. Myself and the director of technology, planning. How, what what our needs are in the classroom, what 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 do we need to get in the hands of students and teachers? To utilize technology, prepare prepare kids uh, to move forward. This is great levels and onto the next level. So that works. Very closely with the IT staff and and finding things out, um. It's a, it's great to have that that instructional technology specialist role because it is that connection between the the. Back end and the behind the walls. Uh, nuts and bolts guts of the of the of a network. Of approach which a lot of the technology folks bring to the table. But having somebody like Mr. Tagliari where he's in corp, he's getting feedback from the from the staff, he's looking at best practices with. Educational technology and bringing that to the meeting and then. We find ways to make that happen.
And Steve, the one thing that's not on here, I'm assuming, I think I know the answer to this, um, I'm assuming this is a a. A three sixty five job, and this is a year in annual job, not a days.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, does that need to be on here? I mean, cuz if you're putting this out to the public, wouldn't, I I think it might be beneficial. To have something on there that indicates that this is a.
Definitely would be in the posting, I can talk to, uh.
No, no, I'm just wherever, I mean, I think we wanna make sure that somebody doesn't think that they're applying for a ten month, a ten month job.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, matter of fact, the summer now.
Right, no, no, lock here, right.
They're getting all these devices back, having to reimagine those, it's it's a big process.
I just didn't know if it was worth.
Yeah, maybe what will.
I'm assuming that's what it was, but yeah. Do we know roughly, do we have a targeted range of salary for for this and? I I'm just, I'm very curious as to what we'll be able to attract.
Yeah, I was looking, I was thinking salary benefits.
Yeah, I mean, these are hard things to get the right people for the right money and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Very mixed.
Well, the benefits would be the standard benefit package for.
Yeah.
The sort of supervisory executive team, right?
Yes.
And I just personally, because like what you're all are saying, I think there needs to be a wide range for the salary because.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It depends on the life experience this person's coming.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do we have?
You don't have to, you you negotiate the salary as as soon as you start to approve somebody.
Yeah, you look at somebody.
You get into the, salaries always kept separate. You don't, you don't put anything like that in.
It might be, it might be something to. Who do we from the district perspective use to gauge market rates for position?
We do, we go to L, uh, Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And we use, um, there's databases out across the state that we can have access to to find out like current salaries of IT directors, directors of curriculum and.
No, I didn't like, I didn't know if they used Glassdoor or they used Indiana, it's like, are there, are there certain?
We have our own research.
Okay, no, no, perfect.
I I think even on the, that's the end of your financial report that they, that that position is is broken out, so that's.
Well, it's all public information, so that would make that.
Yeah, that data, you know, on a statewide basis.
Perfect.
Obviously, our our market is coming a little different than what you might see in Eastern United States, but.
Absolutely, right, right. Yeah, we're upset.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Perfect, thank you very much for your time. All right, on to policies. So first one up, we have a third reading for IHBG for homeschooling. Anybody have any questions on this? Again, this was the one that we just had the minor change to at the end on the second, or the second to last paragraph.
So this is the more general one that simply allows homeschool students to participate in. Extracurricular activities of any time.
Yep.
And no educational sector.
Right, exactly, this covers athletics as well as things like play and then things like that.
Yeah, after school. Yep. And with the more specifics. We'll be sort of getting to that one here next, but we've got it, we've got a follow-up policy to this. That where that where we need some more specific details, especially for athletics. To make sure that we've got qualifications that are gonna be consistent to what the kids in the school district are having to require. In order to participate, we've got that actually pretty well. Set up here in the supplemental policy to be able to make sure that everybody's. Sure. Having to do, jump through the same hoops. Might be the fair way to say that, is it Pam?
Yeah, so full disclosure to everybody here because, um, you guys are all relatively new on the committee with the exception of Ted and I. This issue of homeschooling, um, has come up multiple times, um, in years past and previously on multiple occasions, which I saw on the committee. Um, the, it it really never even got to policy subcommittee level because the, um, committee, um, didn't, um. Just didn't support philosophically, um, homeschooling students being allowed to participate extracurricular. Um, and full disclosure, um, it's been a hard pill for me as well, um, philosophically, um, uh, most of the educational community. Ted has that, um. Uh, the idea like, well, you know, you didn't have my my dinner, so you can't have my dessert, you know? Not saying that, um, your dinner is any less nutritious than mine, it might be even more so, but because I didn't prepare it. Um, I don't know what's in it and therefore, you know, you can't have my dessert, okay, but. That's a philosophical belief, I am of the.
Makes sense.
Firm belief that school committee members shouldn't make decisions based on their own philosophical beliefs.
Right.
Um, so I know, even though it was a hard pill for me as well, I've had to look at. Um, impact on the educational community and the two issues for me were equity. And inclusivity. And for me personally, um, I believe I believe in inclusivity and. Allowing our homeschool students to participate is being more inclusive with that. With regard to the equity one, um, that's where the second policy that we'll bring forward to you guys, um. Comes into play and, you know, we worked really, really hard to craft this, um. My concerns were with regard to athletics and that our athletes are being held to a certain standard with regard to attendance and grades. Um, and that we needed to craft something to, um. Simply make sure that our homeschool students were being held to that same, to the same. Level of standards, not in the same manner, but the same level and that it was, um, mutually agreeable. Between, um, the administration, um, and parents, and I, you know, we we worked hard at this, so.
All right, so on the IHBG, anybody have any questions before we move on to the supplemental? All right, perfect, we'll be voting on that here in a couple minutes, so this IHBGA, this is first reading tonight. This is a policy that I actually found at one of the other districts, I can't remember right now, um, that we ended up tweaking. Uh, but on there you see some of the, and it and it literally just got approved and tweaked out of subcommittee before this meeting tonight. So on there basically is just a bit, a lot of these. Rights that we've got in here are MIAA rights pulled straight from there, um, set up where they've got, it's the plan's gotta be approved by the superintendent. For all the activities and in in lower, it says up there is this. Here and after collectively referred to as an activity, we don't identify extracurricular activity in the policy, so if you see that, that it means extracurricular. For the inters- interscholastic athletics, the principal is gonna be the one that determines the high school grade level placement, nine to twelve for each home ed student. Um, they've gotta live in one of the three districts, obviously, or they're living with an individual who's authorized to care for the child pursuant to a valid caregiver. Authorization affidavit, that was clarification that we got from legal. Principal determines that they meet the guidelines. Um, in order for them to participate in athletics, they've gotta have, they've gotta meet the home education guidelines that are in the MIAA. And then what we've added in yellow is really the the the. The clarification side of this that Pam was looking for, that that we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that if. Students in the school had two hoops that they had to jump through, that it made sense that if you're a a homeschool student. That A, we want to be able to give you the opportunity to participate. But you should have to jump through the same hoops. Um, so the first one is basically indicating that they have to keep an attendance log. Which can be requested by the principal or athletic director at any given time. The other thing is similar to what we have right now, if if they don't go to school or they don't participate at home, one day because they're sick. That means that they're not allowed to participate in any athletic or extracurricular activity on that day. It's the same as what we've got with the kids that are that are actively here at the school district. And on the second one is that in this, and we've made this. A little vague on purpose to give the, to give some flexibility with what, cuz we. Every one of these, Jen could certainly attest to this, every one of the homeschool plans are a little different. At the end of the day, though, they need to be able to show us. On a quarterly basis that they are meeting sort of minimal expectations that they're not failing classes. So the way we've got this is that they've gotta submit a report that documents either mastery of grade level content presented or a report of grades equivalent to classes. So that gives them, it tells them what they need to be able to bring. It doesn't necessarily tell them exactly how they need to present it, that's something that obviously they can work out with the principal. To make sure that he's accepting of that, Jen's role in this is basically approving the program, Mr. Tremel will make sure that he. Basically says you can, you you've met the requirements and it coincidentally, when we brought Mr. Tremel into policy subcommittee. He actually requested these as well, cuz he was looking for some guidance. Um, so will he come up with a standard? It's it's not, I mean, the standard is they have to pass.
But I think what Jen previously said is that for high school students, he would only approve something that is, um. Computer based such that it can easily, um, tied to standards and.
Some do that.
Yeah.
But some people take, um. It's it's an online school, but I, it's not an online course, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, so it's like a remote. Thing and they would get grades, so I just, I don't want it to, I I don't, everybody does something different.
Right.
And so my my goal was, yeah, that's why they homeschool, and 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 that's the beauty of it.
Right.
So I don't wanna tie anybody's hands, but we just have to have something that we have on record that shows mastery of content. Whether it's, they, some people don't grade. Some of people say, these are the standards I taught, this is what they've mastered, there's no grades. Some people say, this is the class my child's taking and they have a B plus in it. Okay, so I don't wanna tie anybody's hands with policy because it's the beauty of homeschooling, you you can record. Uh, mastery in different ways, so they either need to show us mastery of content standards or a grade that shows a passing rate.
And the feedback that we did get.
Yeah, they just can't get into the weeds.
We did have some parents actually come to subcommittee and some of the feedback we got from them was that they thought that this proposal was fair. That if that if we're are, we're going to have this. Opportunity for them to be able to participate, it's reasonable that there's gonna be some hoops that they got it, that they got it, that they got it.
Yeah, I'm just curious what the principal might look at and reject. Like, what were the, what would the standard be for what he says is okay, and just trying to make sure that that gets applied equally to everyone.
So.
Somebody doesn't submit certain kind of plan or or a certain kind of report, he's okay with that, but.
Well, I mean, and and really, it it could be done on an individual basis.
Well, I I mean, I just, these two things sort of, they don't really have any teeth, honestly.
Well, I I mean, if they're, well, if they're, if they're keeping a record.
I mean, if they're, he's all nice. Yeah.
Okay, so, so here's the thing, I mean. You could go down this and say, okay, are they gonna, are they gonna falsify the information that comes in, I mean, we can't. We we can't, we can't make that judgment, I mean, if they're keeping an attendance log. That's got teeth, they have to be in school, they have to, they have to get some sort of attestation that they've been in class that day. And if they're they're able to ask for their their. Attendance log at any time. So look, maybe once a quarter, we wanna see the attendance log, I mean, that's up to athletic director and the principal. If they submit that attendance log and the attendance log shows that they were out. But yet they were at practice or they were at a game, there's there's a subsequent violation. That happens, it's already in the policy.
Can you budget? Absolutely, it's, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I mean.
Are you gonna be the police of that? No.
I mean, it's it's, but compared to what Pam indicated where we ran into, I mean. Compared to every other district that's out there, this is probably one of the most stringent setups that are that there is, because most districts. Do not, the only thing that they have. Is what we, what we just gonna vote on tonight, is that they're allowed to participate. That's it, nobody looks, nobody asks, it's like the see no evil, hear no evil type setup, where at least with here. They're gonna have to jump through some hoops. And 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 they're gonna need to be able to show.
Yeah, I'm totally for all this, I just think it's it's interesting this. Vague gray discretion we're giving the principal to.
Well, it.
Make decisions about those things where where it seems like there really isn't a decision to be made. Like, they're going to provide us the information and we gotta take it on face value, right?
Well, I've already proved the point, yeah, so I'm not gonna approve a plan unless it's.
Gonna meet them.
Gonna meet the criteria.
Right. So what I'm saying is, is these two. Yeah, what I'm saying is, these two paragraphs don't really.
Well, the reason, the is there.
They can ask for the log or whatever, where they can give you, obviously, they can.
Absolutely.
They could.
It's, if the program's been approved. And we ask for whatever we can get, whatever.
See, the tricky thing is with.
It is having much. Of a point being in there.
MIAA. Has very strict rules on attendance.
Yeah.
And. If we have a homeschool student. Who. Didn't go to school that day and was working at the big Y for the day, okay? And then came here, came here and participated in a baseball game after school and somehow that was discovered. We would have to forfeit. The baseball game. So what we're doing here is making sure, and I think this is in here, in order to abide by the normal attendance and achievement rules. That we have a plan in place to ensure so that. Students who participate that are homeschooled, don't put the other students who come here in jeopardy of forfeiting. Tournament games or anything else, because that is the beauty of homeschooling, you can go to work today and then you can do your schoolwork that night. But if you're gonna abide by MIAA guidelines. You've gotta be in school.
Right.
And then go to the game, or we are at risk. And I can't do that to our kids.
Yeah, I, that's totally.
So.
So it's probably, it's, is it perfect? No, is it better than just one line that says they're allowed to participate without having to, having to have any expectations? Yes. Um, is it something that we might wanna look at down the road? Sure, I mean.
Right, I mean, it's like.
But doesn't mean you can't revisit it. Yeah.
My biggest, my biggest fear in all of it is just how the, I don't see, honestly, I see the principal is always probably looking at me saying, fine, whatever, this is great.
Well, yeah, I mean, but if there, but if there's.
But if there's issues, I worried about the, how we. Solve some of those issues if there, if there, there's gonna be scenarios, I guess, that come up that we'll have to adapt to when it happens.
We'll have to have documentation to back up an issue when it arises.
Yeah.
Because if we have students who are failing a certain percentage of classes, if they're they're ineligible to participate in MIAA.
Yeah, I was hoping, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have to be able to document that the students who are participating in our sports, whether they're homeschool or. Regional school students are passing their grades per MIAA regulations, not our regulations.
So that's why the requirement's there, they've gotta have something. The MIAA can come down and say, okay, I wanna see the grades for for this, like this team made it to the state finals. I want, I wanna see, I wanna see the grades for all you kids. We've gotta have it, but without this, we're we're gonna be doomed, we've gotta have, and they're and they're gonna need to submit this at the end of each quarter.
Okay.
So they're gonna have, it'll it'll be there. So.
In high school homeschooling, it's a lot different than younger homeschooling. A lot of it that I approve is online courses or virtual programs that they're, they're doing it. I can't even think of the names, but I know it in September, when I get a lot of the homeschools, they all use a specific. Program and I can't think of what it is, but a lot of our homeschools.
And it's, it is a more standardized.
It is very much more standardized.
And then some of the, you know, less standardized.
Mm-hmm.
Elementary programs, yeah.
We've got two more, we've got two more times to talk about this, so. If you've got other questions, we will, we'll be back at the beginning of January, we can discuss further. Um, all right, next one is. Dress code, we're gonna pull, right, we're not looking at that this week, got some issues that came up that we wanted to address in the subcommittee before we bring it to everybody. Um, last one we've got is. Uh, I did first reading for ABC for tobacco. Uh, I did first reading for ABC for tobacco products on school premises. Um, this was, um, we don't have the before and after, this was a pretty much a wholesale change of policy. It got very much uh. Minimized, uh, there were some references in there in the old policy to civil fines that we're not really obligated or can. Um, issue. Um, so it kind of, it pulled out a huge chunk of that old policy. Uh, but basically this is just, it's uh. Been down. To make it concise and acceptable. Set a fair representation.
Yeah.
Super. It's pretty straightforward. Um. We are going to add one addendum on that, um, at the bottom where it refers to J I H C. To the alcohol, tobacco and drug use, there's a G, J I C G, right, Amy?
Yes.
That is actually tobacco use. Um. That's going to be added here, once we get the second reading, that'll be a new reference, it's going to be on there.
So our policy, you said old stuff in there didn't make sense.
It was a twenty five dollar fine, that's now a hundred dollar fine, but it's issued by the police department and not the school district, so. It's just there in, and. Just a foreshadowing, there may be another policy referring to tobacco use that we may have to. Adjust because it refers to the civil penalties in that one as well. All right, any other questions on this, we move on? Okay. Action items, Superintendent Willard, it's on you.
Move to approve the revised policy, I H B G homeschooling recommended.
So. Okay.
Any questions on I H B G? Okay, we'll do a. Show our hands for a vote approved. Amy, let's just show it, motion pass seven zero zero.
Move to approve the revised job description for Director of Technology, recommended.
Someone.
Any questions on the? Job description? Show our hands for approval? Amy, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School Handbook Change, Suspending Final Exams for the twenty one twenty two school year, recommended.
Someone.
Was there actual, he didn't actually give us the language or was that?
At the bottom.
Like, I thought he said that you have to.
Oh, yeah, he actually did. I think the language is just going to be, they're going to suspend them for this year.
Yeah.
We're just going to suspend what's in the handbook and not conduct any final things. Yeah, we're just, we're just completely. Removing this year. Any other questions? Show our hands to approve the motion. Amy, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the settlement agreement between the Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional School Committee and the Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional Education Association Incorporated Custodial Unit for a three-year contract commencing on July first, twenty twenty one, recommended.
Someone.
Any questions on this updated contracts? Show our hands for approval? Okay, Amy, let the record show motion passes seven zero zero.
Can you read the next one?
I will certainly.
Tricky, I was worried, I was curious how that's gonna go.
I know.
Yeah.
I'll do it, I was, I was involved with this.
Move to, I am standing, uh, move to accept the agreement between the Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional School Committee and Superintendent of Schools Jennifer Willard. For the period of July first, twenty twenty two through July thirty, or sorry, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Someone. I can say you didn't say recommended.
Recommended, sorry.
She just knows.
It's the first time I've done this, so, sorry, recommended.
Someone. Okay.
Any questions on this? Show our hands for approval? Amy, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero, congratulations Superintendent Willard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you for another three years.
I, I love my job. Um, move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional School Committee and Sherry Curran, Assistant Principal for Assignment as Interim Principal at Woodland School, effective November twenty second, twenty twenty one, recommended.
Someone.
Any questions on this MOI?
Is this um until her notice?
For any day that she's acting.
You have backup. Locked in. Let me get a show of hands for approval of this motion. Um, Amy, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick, Talon, Granville Regional School Committee and Benjamin Taggieri, Instructional Technology Specialist. For assignment as interim Director of Technology, effective November twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, recommended.
Someone.
Questions on the MOI for the Director of Technology? You get a show of hands for approval? Amy, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. All right. Done. Superintendent Willard?
I have two things tonight, one of them is, um, I just want to go over, um, I actually started putting together an Excel spreadsheet today because. I just, I can't believe the difference between uh the number of cases from when I started presenting in October seventeenth. The October thirtieth timeline. Um, Southwick had thirty one cases between November twenty eighth and December eleventh, we had a hundred and seventeen cases in Southwick. Granville was at five when I started reporting. And this past two-week period, uh, was a twenty one. And Talend is, was at zero when I first reported and they're at one. Um, SRS vaccination rates.
And one of us here.
Yeah. So the vaccination rates, I also just want to keep in a spreadsheet, um, and when we started re. Reporting out, we were at fifty three percent at the regional schools, we're now at fifty six percent. Slowly incrementing, the good news was, we do have about twenty something students who have a one dose already, so that looks like it should be going up. Um, don't get discouraged with the PMS and the Woodland vaccination rates. Because a lot of those students only have one vaccination and I'm not putting the numbers in until they're fully vaccinated. But at Powder Mill, we're at a twenty nine percent vaccination rate and at Woodland, we're at twenty five point six.
And that's fully vaccinated.
Fully vaccinated.
Wow.
So. Um, in a short period of time. We're, we're slowly starting to see our vaccination rates go up. We held a vaccination clinic here, uh, I received my booster shot, I was scared I was going to cry in front of the kids, I did really well, I was so proud of myself, but I, but I didn't have a Spiderman Band-Aid, I had to have somebody give me one. But, um. I was disappointed, I wanted a kid Band-Aid, they didn't have any. But, um, we had forty seven people, um, come to the, a vaccination clinic and they'll be back, uh, in another couple of weeks to do the second shot for anybody. Who got their first shot. Um, the other issue is, um, we are starting to see what we're going to call mask fatigue. Um, where kids are getting tired of the mask wearing and it goes from here. To here. To here. To here, and right now, um, we're really starting to see a spike, or they're calling it a surge in our schools. Um, I reported over twenty two cases of COVID in our schools in just two days to the state. Um, we're starting to see it on some of our athletic teams. Um, so, uh, we have, um, at the regional school, Mr. Tremel just wanted me just to share with you as a school committee to know. Um, they do have a list of what they're going to call, um. Students who who repeatedly are not wearing their masks. And so I've always had the philosophy of you've ever just sent out the blanket email when it only applies to a few people because. It it it, people know, need to know, you're one of the people who aren't following this, that I'm, I'm talking to you. I always remember as a teacher, um, the teacher would say something when I was a student and I always thought she was talking to me. And the kid next to me, who I think she was actually talking to, never thought that it was them that they were talking to, so. Um, I'm always a firm believer of you address things head on. And so, um, they do have a list, not everybody is going to be getting a letter. But, um, on December twenty second, a letter is going to be going home to kids who are chronically, um, having to be spoken to about their masks. And, um. They are talking in here about the steps that they're taking, it's going to be a redirection from the teacher. Um, they're going, the teacher will contact home to notify the family. Then the teacher will be sent from class to the assistant principal where the student will miss instruction. Um, and then they're going to follow the normal progressive discipline procedures. Um, we have really found that schools are not a place where COVID is spreading. Uh, most of our issues and we're tracking where our cases are coming from, it's mostly outside of school. And so we really have to keep our masks in place and just keep doing what it is we know we're doing. To keep these numbers down, we are lucky we have test and stay. Um, our vaccination numbers are going up. Um, I'm hoping. No, hope is not a strategy. Amy's dad, but, yeah, thank you, Amy, but, um, we know hope is not a strategy, but. Uh. I'm thinking that people are watching this and watching what's happening and that the holidays, we do expect to see another surge like we did after Halloween and then after. Um, Thanksgiving and then we'll probably see one after Christmas, but we're hoping it starts to dip after that. And we just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can as a school district to keep our schools open, to keep our kids playing sports, to keep our kids. Having their chorus opportunities, some places didn't want to have a concert, I said, let our kids have their concert, this, they need this bit of normalcy. If we can do this, I want to keep our fans in the stands. But let's just all work together to keep these opportunities available for our kids. And if it simply just means wearing a mask. I'm with you, I don't love wearing my mask, but I do it and I do it for the kids and so that we're here and that we stay open and you get all these opportunities and don't have to miss out on anything. So that is going to go to just repeated offenders, um, says December twenty second, so I don't know if he sent it out or if he's sending it out tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow's the twenty second.
Is it paper or email?
Uh, it'll probably be an email. Um, but it's not going out to everybody, but he just wanted to let the school committee know. Um, that this was going out, so you weren't caught off guard.
Hopefully we don't get it.
I know, I know.
There's three of us here that are going, four of us going, oh, I hope I don't get a seat dance.
Hey.
You are.
Kids are kids and you know what? That's what they do, so that's what we have.
Six, there's eight kids here represented and four of us, so.
But I just want to thank everybody, um. We've made it. To Christmas break. And our kids have really had great opportunities, we had the chorus, we played, um, the. Powder Mill chorus played in their pajamas in the hallway today. And it's just great to. Hear music and hear the kids and. That's what brings our schools alive are the kids that are inside of it, so the more we can do for them. We just want to keep that trend going and we don't want to have to stop everything, so. We'll keep doing what we need to do to give you everything that you deserve.
Okay, Woodland first graders got to do their gingerbread houses in here. My second grader was like, what? Sorry.
So they're disappointed, they need to do that makeup, gingerbread. Um, all right, thank you very much Superintendent Willard, Mr. Presnell, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, I'll just mention the. Cyber security awareness training, the program concluded, uh, was supposed to officially conclude last Friday. We had some folks sneak in some, some, uh, some work over the weekend, so that was good, um. The final results of, we're, we're at about eighty five percent participation rate. We, we literally crushed the statewide average, which was probably. In the low to mid fifty percent, uh, range. Um. And if you factor out. A lot of our users who. Have an email address, like, don't really use it, um. Or use it very seldomly, uh, we're, we're well over ninety percent, um, participation rate. And so we're signed up again for another round of this next year, the state's providing a little more flexibility. So we need to kind of figure out how we want to, how we want to do that with the various, and sometimes that's the challenge is we have. A lot of. People doing different jobs on different schedules and. What, and working under different bargaining agreements, what makes sense for, for one group may not make sense for the other, so we're trying to figure that out. And, um, have at it again, uh, next year. We're starting to work on, uh, FY twenty three, uh, budget. Uh, we'll have worksheets in the. Administrator's hands. By the end of next week. The goal of getting things back in our hands by mid, uh, mid-January. And late January, we see what the. Numbers numbers are for, uh. Uh, for FY twenty three.
What was it, what power sheet do we get?
Cherry.
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 And it's that pink.
Okay.
Basically, basically you go to a computer screen.
So you could turn it pink.
You could.
Put a filter. Probably, who's just sitting. Um, all right, so, thank you, anything else? We're good, okay. Uh, in matters to, uh. From a time perspective, do you have anything from some committees and liaisons that need to come forward? I don't want to go through each and every one of these, we. Had a rather long meeting so far, I've got a couple.
Just real quick, they're moving buses, um.
Oh, good.
LPV, you see them moving buses from behind Woodland. To an undetermined place in Avalon. There's a shoemaker lane, hopefully.
So they're still looking for the, the land.
And I asked them why and they said because they'll have two mechanics there as opposed to one.
Do you know when?
Uh, no, they have to find the place.
Okay.
That's gonna put them first.
But it sounds like, it sounds like they're committing to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they made the decision to move them, but they still need to find a place, they don't have no time. Does this in, um, impact any employees? I did not ask that question. For example, if we have a mechanic here.
They actually work for LP.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, it's all of their employees, so. And then it would simply mean that our drivers. Would need to report there instead of here, correct?
Unless you're reporting to, some of them, the buses are in, right?
Parkhouse, yeah.
Yeah.
Say it again?
Some of the buses are parked.
Oh, like, Grandville and Col, the buses.
Yeah, I mean, I know where you want.
Maybe I'll.
Yeah, someone's seeing where they are.
The stretch is all the way.
Yeah, but I want to compare, does that make me a Southwood, what was it, I'm sorry, is the, is the bus kind of.
I believe they'll all be going to drive.
Well, ask that question because Ted's saying otherwise and I think I may have seen one.
No, they, no, they stay there overnight.
You're right, but I'm saying all the buses are moving.
Oh, yeah.
So regardless, regardless of whether or not they're parked.
Yeah.
So that law might be a change, yeah.
There'll be no change for those buses.
Well, no, that's, no, they'll be going because there will be, um.
No, because they're not parked, the, the, that, never not.
They're not parked here now, when you say the buses are in Talend, that they're sitting in Talend.
Right, right, and it's my understanding that they're all being moved in.
Well, yeah, no, no, that doesn't.
Just after, just after.
All could be, all could be relative, Erica, because if.
I doubt if they're going to drive them all the way up there.
Right, it doesn't make sense.
Anybody that normally reported here to pick up their buses is going to have to go ten minutes further down the road. All right, anybody else? John, technology update?
No, working on it, right.
All right, one of these, one of these nights, you're going to surprise me, tell me that you had a meeting.
You let us know.
I do have a question and it's not that, I'm just going to use it under the technology liaisons. We do have a policy about hiring administrators, I'm not quite sure if this position. Falls under that, it's more for like a building principal or not, essentially the technology liaison, would you want to be on the hiring committee? For the IT director?
Sure.
Okay.
I think, I second that.
Okay.
I don't know if you're asking Pam too.
Are you asking me as well or just Jen?
Oh, I, I didn't know you both were.
It's a two-person committee, there's a lot of work to be done.
Well, if either one of you would like to be on the interviewing committee, we do have a school committee policy on like a hiring protocol. I don't really think this falls under the administrator one, but I'm just offering the invitation if either one of you as the technology liaison would want to be on.
In lieu of a meeting, maybe they could be part of the start, that could be the beginning kickoff show.
I'll be on it, Steve will be on it, Beth will be on it, Jenny will probably be on it.
It's, we did one before where we get a file of resumes and we kind of, they're our.
Paper screen, sure, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with doing that.
Okay.
I don't, no, I don't want to get too involved in doing what you do.
Okay.
You know, but.
That's a great idea, the paper.
We welcome you.
Yeah, we do welcome it.
We, and we did talk, um, about. Trying to identify what would be a good way to run a meeting on technology with the technology liaison, so. We are talking about that and working, so yeah, once we get into the new year. Don't be surprised if you get an invite from you.
Oh, Amy, can we please add? Um under liaison. Master plan and.
Southwick.
Put, yes, Southwick master plan and make sure Mr. Job's name is in like.
Oh, it's on there.
It's on there, yeah, capital.
Oh, capital committee back.
That's different.
It's different.
Yeah.
That's a different.
Oh, wait, oh, it's on there, but it's not on our sheet.
Alright, it's not there, but it's not here, yeah. Um and the other thing, and I don't know if I can't see that.
She's got it on there.
Yep, okay, so Erica is on spec up there, but not on paper.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I I did have, we did have a meeting last Thursday. Basically, the the residents of Southwick. Are going to be getting a survey uh in the mail. To kind of uh formulate an idea of how you want the. Town to look from a business standpoint. So um I guess the last survey was sent. Nineteen, well, I should say nineteen ninety-six, one survey was sent and then two thousand and. Five. Probably eleven or twelve percent of the town responded, which is actually a really good number. You know, saying saying that, you know, voter turnout, if if you. So basically, you know, the Southwick residents are going to be getting a survey in the mail. And um it'll be formatted with with an outline of, you know, what do you want to see the town. Evolve to in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, so. Uh so it's really, it, that's it.
How many hours should we give me for the survey?
No, I mean, that was really what the meeting was about.
That's cool. Patty's, he's gonna look at all the surveys. Yeah, well. Okay, we are now at our second public comment section. Uh anybody that's here would like to make public comment, this is your opportunity to jump up podium. Uh I got no takers, so we are gonna move on to old business. And we got nothing there, new business, we got. Curriculum discussion, Superintendent, well, do you want to start this or? How do you want to do this?
You, I I think you guys should start it because I have um Joe and Jenny at home.
Oh.
And they're watching and they just are gonna be um soliciting and they're gonna put a presentation together in January based on. How do we like to give you an overview of how curriculum is developed?
Yeah.
The process that's involved, but if you have anything specific.
Yeah.
That you would like addressed in the presentation, um. It's a time for you to discuss it amongst yourselves and then we'll adapt our presentation to help best answer your questions.
Okay, I'd love to see a timeline of. Uh when this stuff was approved, who was approved, what the chain is of how it got to. Uh to the kids. Just so we can fully understand the rules, I think some of that would be in what they're talking about.
It will be.
But I just want to know how we got, because it seems by all. All purposes that the the survey thing, whatever happened there was not okay. For sure, and it and it's been deemed sort of already that we shouldn't, it shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, just ask for an update, because I don't know, if there's some of us that have got kids in ninth grade, so we're a little bit sort of open to that. Um there was some concerns, questions, I know all of us got an email from a parent. Almost two weeks ago concerning this, concerning the curriculum in. Um the ninth grade honors class, um and from my understanding, it's most of the curriculum for all of ninth grade is very similar. Uh there were uh YouTube videos that were presented to the kids, there were this survey slash quiz, it was done for by Harvard University. That was provided to the kids, um there were certain subject matters that come up, I know from. From my perspective, um the question, it it is sort of on what John was saying is that. How does or what, how does something get approved?
Well, back it up. I think what the committee needs to be clear on is what gets approved and what doesn't. Because there's a difference between curriculum and instructional materials. And there is absolutely no way that every single YouTube video is gonna get approved.
Okay.
So like I think that one of the first things that that needs to be presented. Um to the committees, if the committee is clear on, is exactly what is it that is. That that is subject to the approval process and then what is teacher discretion? Um and I think another thing that needs to be made clear to the committees is what the role of the committee is. In curriculum and instruction as well.
No, fair enough, I mean, because it's.
These are all good points.
Yeah, we need the whole picture, I don't think it's a lot of.
Exactly.
Because I think.
You need to start big picture.
Yeah, and I think part it, I think it's a great question, because it might be, and I think, I guess from a. From from a parent that has a child in the class. I don't know whether it is a. Curriculum issue, because as as we had a public comment this morning earlier that that we've got. Information coming up from the school that is contradictory. We've got like who approves what is really, my, one of the questions, I. Yeah, what's approved, who approves it? Is there any sort of oversight during the year? Um and I guess this may go to a different question, like if the curriculum in general gets approved. Obviously, the teachers have leeway to present certain information. Is there anybody overseeing that information to determine? If what is being presented from the teacher as a. Sort of their prerogative. Is it appropriate or not? Because what we found so far is that in this example. We've got a survey that was created by Harvard University that. We've already been indicated that it's not going to be provided again. I sent an email to the actual company that produced this. And asked them point blank, do you have a specific? Um age range that this should be provided to? And they said, well, we don't really have a a specific age range, but generally this survey should be done by consenting adults. It should not be done by minors. Well, then that comes to the. Age old question, it's great that we're saying that we're not doing this again. My question is, how did it ever get in there in the first place? How did that? How did that get determined that it was appropriate to be provided to the kids? And do we have anybody that sort of oversees stuff to make sure that if stuff does come in like that, that it's looked at?
So related to that, very often, um things don't get scrutinized. Until a concern is raised. So related to that, something that the committee should hear. And and maybe that needs to be more clearly specified is if a parent has a concern with regard to. Any educational materials that are being used in the classroom, then what is the, what 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 is the appropriate? Chain of command, should they be going to the teacher first? Should they be going to the principal first, what 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 is, what is a concerned parent's? Role and 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 procedure for how they express their concern?
Clearly, we have a, we have a problem there, because in the multiple emails I've gotten in the past. Almost everyone has feared some sort of issue with reporting what what's happened, yeah.
The school committee is not the right venue, right, a concerned parent needs to know what the right venue is.
No, but they're great. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, and and just so that, and I know I I think I get to everybody that that. From that perspective, it would be considered a complaint above a teacher, which does, we do have a policy for that. I indicated to the person that sent the email in, this is a procedure that you can follow. That you can submit a complaint about this, follow this, we do, you you have a procedure that you can follow for that. It it's. I I guess the part that concerns me, which is is where. This gets tricky is. I know Superintendent Willard and I had a discussion concerning surveys. And. I think everybody's in, because we've already determined that we're not gonna do that thing again. So. Is it, some of this does. Get to a point, it's like, okay, is there a policy issue? That we need to address in policy, do we need to have a policy that indicates no surveys will be provided to students? In any of the, any of the classroom unless they have parental approval, because. Obviously, you would think that that would be. Hey, we shouldn't be providing something if it's got a two-page disclaimer for a fourteen-year-old to be able to to approve. Maybe we need to have a policy that clearly indicates it, because right now we don't, there's nothing in there. Is that, and I'm not saying we do this tonight, I'm just saying that it might be something where some of these questions or concerns that come up. May result in us having to address this from a policy perspective, which we do have certainly the privilege of.
I agree.
Okay.
I think it's absolutely gives us, has given us the opportunity that we need to look at. The whole process like we're gonna do further, like we we really haven't. Ever dealt into it as much as we should have.
And I mean, especially with somebody.
I think if the committee is concerned with how curriculum is is approved, then what we need to hear from is we need to hear from the curriculum director.
Yes.
As well as administrators with regard to how, how, what is approved?
Yeah.
How it is approved, what is not approved?
Mm-hmm.
Um and and what does not need to be approved, and then if a parent, you know, has a concern. Then, you know, who should they bring it to first, what is what is the proper chain of command?
And Jenny is extremely well-versed on curriculum development and the school committee policies. So she she's gonna take you through the school committee policies that are developed through curriculum development. To kind of bring you through how it starts, where it goes, and it's all related to policy. The only thing I want to address is. This, I've been here six years and honestly. This fearing of retaliation is in the past few emails is the first time that it has come up in my entire tenure here. So I I need to put it out there that. We as a school district do not stand by bullying, we will not retaliate. We are the people who will stand in front of retaliation and bullying, so I need to make it very, very clear. That in order to solve a problem, we need to be involved and our our interest is in always. Communicating with the parents and coming to a resolution that everybody feels good about. But I don't know where this fearing of retaliation is coming from, because I can honestly say in my six years here. I've never had an issue where one of our staff members has ever retaliated or done anything to a child that has come forward. So I I I just need to put that out there, I don't know where this is coming from, I keep hearing it in emails, but. Um I I I need to make a public statement that we are against bullying, we, there's a whistleblower law out there that we have to abide by. That if you come forward and make a complaint, it is illegal. For us at any point to do any form of retaliation against you, it's against the law. So.
I think that's where we can do a better job of educating how to go through the right process.
Right, right.
We we've not given out clearly the right instruction or it hasn't gotten to where it needs to get, where people understand where the right place is to go, I mean.
Yeah, and how do we do that, you know, like what is the process for us to?
Well, I gotta tell you, as a teacher, if you know, if I put something out there that's offensive, I want to be the very first one to know. You know, I mean, if i- if I asked a question that was offensive in any way, then why don't you tell me first? Right. And that's what our policy states, because you, we know, you go to the teacher, then you go to the building administrator and so forth.
But I I I can, I mean, I I get it, it may be unfounded and it may be crazy, but I can see that if I put myself in that person's shoes, I can see the potential of being worried that. Am I, is my kid going to be isolated by this, if I complain, is the teacher going to look at them in a different way? I get that they shouldn't be doing it. And it and it's not legal, but I I can see the perspective of that idea.
Yeah, it's just about stepping out of your comfort zone, you know, from the parent's perspective. I feel like they just feel like they're stepping out of their comfort zone by bringing up an issue to, one, they don't know whom to bring it to, so.
Yeah, that's our first problem.
And so then you're gonna go through administrative disappointments, eh? Like what?
Well, no, I mean, but I mean, our po.
They weren't receptive to their.
Our policy, yeah, I mean, our policy clearly identifies that the parent can go to either the student, it's sorry, to the teacher or the principal. It can go to either or. So so I I mean, it's there, I think the other piece of this. That since we're going down this route, we've got to make sure that on our end. That when we're communicating back to the parents. That that communication is clear, it's unambiguous, and it does, because we've got, we're we're running into situations where. And I'm sure it's not done purposely, but we've got, well, all all the curriculum was approved, but then, well, maybe not all the curriculum was approved, and it. And then who's actually approving? Is it, is it Jenny, is it, I mean, I, is is it the principals, do they do it together, I mean, where where does that? Sort of responsibility lie? And then in light of this, I think it's a fair question to say, do we need to have some? Spot checks from an oversight perspective of the of the information that the teachers are doing, that they're determining on their own. That's appropriate, because we've obviously got at least one example where that judgment. Was not correct. And and we've had to pull something, so if there's one. Is there more, I don't know, I mean, but if it's just a general, hey, we're approving the curriculum and then it's a free-for-all with whatever can be presented. Then is that right, I I don't know the answer.
There's a hard balance here to try to find.
Absolutely, I mean, it's not like, hey, look, you need to look at everybody's every single YouTube video, but I think. Um I don't think it's inappropriate to say, look, we might need to to implement some sort of oversight here, because this obviously happened at least once. And I know, we I've talked to Superintendent Willard about this this week. This is the first time from her understanding that we're questioning curriculum.
Yes.
I don't think that it's. With what's going on in today's society with curriculum and all of these. Sensitive subjects that are out there, I don't think this is going to get any better, I think it's gonna get, I I think it's gonna be continued. Questioning about it. And just because we didn't have anybody come forward before, doesn't mean that we didn't have any issues, it just means that nobody complained. Um it it's, we need to be able to look at this for what it's worth and have an opportunity to make sure that we're being transparent. That we're being receptive of the complaints and that we're responding to it, making sure that we're doing the best. Effort that we can to make sure that what we're providing and what we're saying we're providing is accurate. So hopefully that gives Jenny.
Yeah, and and I think it's gonna be super helpful to go through the policies, because we do have. Um at our policies, an obligation to present these um. Uncomfortable discussions in the classroom, um to provide an opportunity to teach our students how to have a civil discourse. Um about topics that people feel very passionately about. Um but our goal is, we have to make sure we bring it in a balanced approach, and and that is what I, as the superintendent. Um and and looking at, um is really. Making our place, our classrooms a place where all kids feel safe, where all kids belong, where all kids feel heard and that um. We can, we can be able to talk about things that we don't necessarily agree with, but not dislike the person who's saying it. But we can always learn from somebody, even if we don't agree with them. You could always learn something from somebody, and it's always an opportunity for me to learn. When somebody, I learn more from people who don't agree with what I say than I do from people who agree with what I say. So. I always look at it as an opportunity to learn. And. What I'm learning is, I'm learning a lot as a superintendent and a lot of what I'm learning is uncomfortable. And I'm learning to live with this uncomfortable feeling, because I feel like I'm becoming a better superintendent, I'm being a better listener. And I'm making our schools a better place for all of our kids. And. We need kids to tell us if something doesn't feel right, or you know, I I I want to learn about this or. But that's how we get better.
And that there are other perspectives.
Yes. And.
It's all about that.
It's about, it's all about balance, right? And that that, and again, I'm always gonna go back to, I learn more from people who don't agree with my perspective and. If you just spend dinner around my house, I have a. Twenty-five-year-old conservative and a twenty-two-year-old liberal, and let me tell you, the two of them have wonderful conversations. I learn more listening to the two of them than I do anywhere else, but. That's what makes our world a beautiful place, but we just have to be respectful and we have to be able to. Validate and um present an educated um response, and and I feel like this, we're trying to do in a very. Highly politicized world right now, when we wrote this curriculum, a parent made a great point six years ago. This world wasn't as politicized as it is right now, so what it might have felt like six years ago, it might not feel like today. So it is our school's responsibility. To look at it and say, okay, this is the world we're living in today, let's look at our curriculum. Um and that's what makes us a better school district, so um I I think we have fabulous teachers, I don't. Anybody to ever feel it fear if you say something that anyone would ever retaliate against you, because. I tell you, I go through those classrooms and. One of the reasons I came to this school district was because of the relationships the teachers have with the kids. And I've been in other districts, the teachers here care, they care and um. It's really about culture and climate to them and.
So Will, so we're gonna have Jenny, Mr. Tramell is um, is Jordan gonna be with them?
Probably, yes, because she's finished.
Rewriting the curriculum or the?
No, 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 they're not rewriting it, they're gonna take you through the process.
No, they're gonna come back and at our next meeting, which is, did we figure out whether?
January eleventh.
January eleventh, so our next meeting on the eleven. They'll be here to answer the questions that we've asked tonight, and then sort of if we have any follow-up questions, they'll be here to sort of help. Guide us through this and then we'll have to figure out, is there anything from that? That we can act on from this end, I mean, if there are. That we can act on from this end? I mean, if there are policy issues that come up that we feel that we need to clarify. It could go to policy subcommittee. Um, if there's not, then great, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't get an update three, four months down the road, um. And you never know, now that we've talked about this, we might get some other emails, or superintendent, or principal, or somebody may get some more emails from other parents. I don't know. Um.
That's why we're here.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I will entertain a motion. Can I get a show of hands for ending the meeting? Amy, let the record show the motion passes six zero zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening and a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, everybody, thank you.